We've got three. Kyle's on the phone. There's Mr. Jackson.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. We do have Councilman Pike on the phone. Governor Ivey had reinstated the state of emergency so we can call in to conduct business again. All right, we will move through this agenda and get any of our questions answered, and then we'll start our meeting at 10 o'clock. All right, first is approval of minutes, August 2nd, 2021, 5:30 PM work session and city council regular meeting, August 2nd, 2021, 6 PM. Any questions? All right, next, approval of monthly bills. Bills approved July 2021, monthly bills. Any questions? All right, next, public hearings, resolution number 21215, approved transfer request for restaurant retail liquor license for Casa de Santiago, doing business as Casa Santiago, 2401 Sixth Avenue, Southeast, Suite B, Decatur, Alabama, 35601.
No changes.
No changes. Any questions? All right, next is resolution number 21216, approved request for a special event retail liquor license for JW Steakhouse on September 11th, 2021, at 2901D Point Mallard Circle, Southeast, Dragon Boat Races, Decatur Morgan Hospital Foundation. No changes. Any questions? All right, resolution number 21217, adopt new job classification for Police Department Mental Health Liaison.
No changes.
No changes. Any questions? All right, resolution number 21218, authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with TTL for air compliance assistance.
There's no real change, except we're going to substitute, when we get it, the contract from the consultant that will spell out and have it in typing rather than handwritten. The changes are basically cities cannot indemnify, and so that'd be taken out, and then any mediation would be in Decatur.
Okay.
And that's basically, there's no real change to what we've already seen. It's just that I wanted to clarify that we're going to swap out when we get the later agreement from them that spells out those particular items that would be typed out rather than handwritten.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Herman. All right, resolution number 21219, approve budget amendment for Pew Wright, proposed floodway brush creek.
No changes.
No changes. Any questions? All right, approve engineering budget amendment for Garver Engineering Highway 20. No changes. Any questions? All right, resolution number 21221, approve budget amendment for signal detection issues estimate from Temple. No changes. Any questions? Resolution number 21222, approve DU aid to construction for Shady Grove Lane Utilities Modifications. No changes. Any questions? Resolution number 21223, approve budget amendment for building construction, associate's proposal for work at Cary Matthews Center. No changes. Any questions? All right, resolution number 21225, authorize an agreement for use of city property for River Clay Fine Arts Festival. No changes. Any questions? I have one I just talked to you about. They're going to use the entire fenced-in portion, and we'll be able to serve alcohol there. I'm asking Lee and Herman, but...
Yes, and there should be a special event liquor license that will be presented at the later council.
Okay. And so, and it's not arts and entertainment, so we would have to have some kind of mechanism where people could not get out.
And that's, there's supposed to be adequate fencing for that, and there will be a gate entrance that everyone will have to come in and out.
Okay. Okay.
They generally hire police officers, police officers who would be...
Okay. So Noel, do you know if an officer would be?
I do. The fencing that they generally use for the country, all down second avenue, our site will be closed in that, and we only have one gate now, and so we'll definitely work with all the power of the officers.
Okay. All right, that was my only question. Any other questions? Thanks, guys. All right, resolution number 21226, declare crash data group a sole source vendor for purchase of a crash data retrieval unit for the police department.
No changes.
No changes. Any questions? All right, resolution number 21227, award bid number 21022R for dumpster service to Waste Away Dumpster Service LLC. No changes. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes? We can, we can do that in the meeting, if that's okay. Is that okay? Thank you. All right, resolution number 21228, approve legal department contract services budget increase to cover cost of appraisals.
No changes.
No changes. Any questions? Resolution number 21229, approval of MOU agreement between Decatur City Schools and Police Department for SRO program. Herman, you know?
No changes.
Okay. Any questions? All right, approve architecture work for a new maintenance building at the cemetery.
No changes.
No changes. Any questions? Resolution number 21231, approve budget amendment for sanitary landfill. No changes. Any questions? All right, resolution number 21232, approve additional right-of-way mowing for Lawnscape LLC.
That just doubles the number of cuts.
Yeah.
It just doubles the cost of what it is.
Okay. Any questions? And this is for the Belt Line, Sixth Avenue, okay. 31. Resolution number 21233, authorize a lease agreement between Franklin Rock and Recycle LLC and City of Decatur.
So this is an addition we spoke about earlier. This is the lease agreement for the grinder, which will be $40,000 a month. We will have to pay for the inbound freight cost of $9,000. And it goes into effect on the 24th.
Okay. How long do you think we'll be running it?
No more than two months, but I did, you know, no more than, well, let's say no more than three months.
Okay.
I'm still waiting on that tank to come for the Peterson grinder that we have now.
Okay. All right, any questions?
Yes, y'all want the approved similar to the official stuff.
Right. Okay. Ordinance number 214471, establish recycling processing fees at the landfill recycling facility.
There's no change.
No changes. Any questions? All right, next are board appointments. Board appointment, industrial development board, Terrence Welch. Any questions? And then next is appoint Sheila Davis to the Decatur Morgan County Court Authority. Any questions? All right, we will start our meeting at 10 o'clock. Thank you.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Pastor J.D. Thorne with Point Mallard Parkway Baptist Church will lead us on the invocation and pledge.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, you are the Lord of all creation. You're the maker of heaven and earth. You spoke this universe into being and you govern it through your wisdom. Father, as our city leaders gather today, may they lead in a way that reflects your character. May you grant them wisdom to make the decisions that are best for our community. We ask your blessings upon our city and our surrounding areas. Father, we lift up the nations of Afghanistan and Haiti today, asking you to help those that are suffering as they are a reminder that we truly live in a broken, fallen Genesis three world. And Lord, that our only hope is found in Jesus Christ. And it is to him we make our plea this morning, and it's in his name that we pray. Amen.
That's our pledge. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Pastor J.D. Roll call.
Ladner.
Here.
McMasters.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Pike.
Here.
Pepper.
All right, as we said before, Governor Ivy did reinstate the state of emergency, so we will need to vote on this item. It says agenda items will be acted upon if they meet the guidelines necessary to perform essential minimum functions of the governmental body or a matter necessary to respond to COVID-19.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters. Second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
That motion passes with a vote of four to zero. Before we get started, Ms. Maxine Ellison would like to speak to us. And she, you can go ahead and come, come speak to us. We'll do three minutes. You can just say your name at the podium. Thanks.
Maxine Ellison, I came personally to tell the council and also the city of Decatur 2013. And I've been doing this some thirty-six, thirty-seven years, working with youth, which is an after-school tutorial program. And I just personally want to thank Mr. Jackson, the mayor, and others who was very instrumental in helping to make this building become a reality. And sometimes, you know, we come to voice negative opinion. Today, I came to personally thank you. I know how we were given the opportunity to, to do things many times in the city of Decatur. You know, I don't do things for people to give me a pat on the back because I know God is going to give me my just reward. I came to just say thank you for giving me the opportunity to work with youth a little while longer. It, it, it has been one great thing for me. Started as an educator, in the, as a third grade teacher, ended up as a community helper. And you know what? If we see things in a way in which we can help others, this world would probably grow into a place, especially Decatur. We need to come together. We need to stop looking at what you are, but what I can do for God. Because he's the only one going to tell you, well done, good and faithful servant. Now, we go to church, all of us, but remember, it's only what you do for others. And again, Mr. Jackson, the mayor, and all the others that are here, thank you for giving me the opportunity to make my program shine for the young people. Again, thank you.
Ms. Ellison, before you leave, before you leave, I want to say on behalf of our community and the whole, thank you for what you do. The impact that you have on our community as a whole is undeniable. We worked on that project, I think, Alan, since about 2013. It took a long time for, and, and some reasons were necessary, some not so necessary as to why it took so long. But I want to say that it was worth the wait.
It was.
And everything that you do in our community is appreciated. And we just want to say thank you, and we want to say twenty years from now, thirty years from now, thank you, Ms. Ellison, for continuing to do this stuff.
Well, you know what I said? This is what I said. When I saw my name, Maxine Ellison, on that building, I, I couldn't go, I just couldn't contain my composure. I didn't expect to have that. He personally told me I was going to unveil them and embarrass them, help me put them down. And when I looked and saw that, hey, you know, I'm, I'm not a person that loved my name in the lamplight, but that was worth it. Again, I just thank everybody. Love, hate, I love you.
I wish we could start every meeting like. All right, first we have approval of minutes. August 2nd, 2021, 5:30 PM, work session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters. Second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Aye.
Minutes are approved four to zero. Next, we have city council regular meeting, August 2nd, 2021, 6 PM.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Aye.
Minutes are approved four to zero. Next, we have approval of monthly bills. Approved July 2021, monthly bills.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Aye.
Monthly bills are approved four to zero. Next, we have public hearings. First is resolution number 21215, approved transfer request for restaurant retail liquor license for Casa de Santiago. Doing businesses Casa Santiago, 2401 Sixth Avenue, Southeast Suite B, Decatur, Alabama, 35601.
We recommend approval.
Okay, any questions? All right, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone here to speak from the public, you can speak now. All right, seeing no one here to speak, we'll consider the public hearing closed.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Resolution number 21215 is approved four to zero. Next is resolution number 21216, approved request for a special event retail liquor license for JW Steakhouse on September 11th, 2021. Location, 2901D Point Mallard Circle, Southeast Dragon Boat Races, Decatur Morgan Hospital Foundation.
We recommend approval.
All right, this is a public hearing. If anyone here to speak on the matter, you can speak now. Seeing no one here to speak, we'll consider the public hearing closed.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters. Second, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Aye.
Resolution number 21216 is approved four to zero. Thanks, Lori. Next, we have resolutions. Resolution number 21217, adopt new job classification for police department mental health liaison.
Thank you. This is a new position that we want to kind of institute for partnership with the mental health providers out there in order to bring mental health service to the citizens of Decatur, especially through the form of police calls for service.
All right. We have a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters. Second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Aye.
Resolution number 21217 is approved with a vote of four to zero. Next, chief, resolution number 21218, authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with TTL for air compliance assistance. Wanda?
Good morning, Wanda Tyler, landfill and recycling. We're asking you to approve the, an agreement with TTL who will ensure that we are in compliance with our Title V air admissions. They will be preparing the permit application for our reporting year of 2020 to 2021. They'll also be doing any testing in regards to our landfill gases to make sure we're in compliance. This agreement is for $17,600. And it will go into effect as soon as you approve because I think the, the first reporting is due on the 25th of this month.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters. Second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Aye.
Resolution number 21218 is approved four to zero. Resolution number 212, sorry, that was 218. Resolution number 21219, approved budget amendment for Pewright proposed floodway, Rush Creek.
Mayor, Council, Carl Pruitt, City Engineer. This is, there was some funding that, from a previous project that I failed to get rolled over into this fiscal year, and this would be the amount of money that's due to Pewright McAnally for the final of their contract with the city.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Aye.
Resolution number 21219 is approved four to zero. Next is resolution number 21220, approved engineering budget amendment for Garver Engineering Highway 20.
This is dealing with our Dick Garrett Bridge project, with some of the utility changes that's happened with the project so far. Garver said to do some additional work, and this is the funding to pay them for their additional work.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Aye.
Resolution number 21220 is approved four to zero. Next is resolution number 21221, approved budget amendment for signal detection issues estimate from Temple.
Yeah, we had a list of signal detection loops that have gone bad or failed at various intersections throughout the city. Temple provided a cost to replace those with cameras, and this is that cost to replace those detection systems with cameras.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters. Second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? We do have intersections with these cameras already, right?
Absolutely.
And they work well.
Absolutely, yes.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Aye.
Resolution number 21221 is approved four to zero. Resolution number 21222, approved DUA to construction for Shady Grove Lane Utilities Modifications.
These are the relocation costs for DUA to construction for Decatur Utilities for Shady Grove Lane project, and would recommend approval.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Aye.
Resolution number 21222 is approved four to zero. Next is resolution number 21223, approved budget amendment for building construction associates proposal for work at Cary Matthews Center.
And this work at Cary Matthews is to, I guess, contract with BCA. This work at Kerry Matthews is to, I guess, contract with BCA to cut a hole in the wall and tear out the gym floor, and all this work would need to be done regardless of whether we're full renovation or not, this work has to be done, so we're not spending money that's not necessary. But it also allows us to get some more information to hopefully get a better idea of what to do to help stabilize the soils underneath the building.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike, any discussion?
Yeah, Carl, I think that a lot of the concern that's come out in the community is that we've heard so many things about a centralized recreational facility. I think that the people in our community know the need and the impact that Kerry Matthews has in our community. So when people read this, and they understood that, you know, that there is something out there that makes, it seems if we don't want to keep Kerry Matthews, they became alarmed with that, and you and I talked about that out there. I think we found in the past that structurally, the building is sound, that foundation-wise, the building is sound. So, you know, if this is what we're doing, if we're just, you know, coring and making sure that we can secure the floor and make sure that the floor is good, then I'm good with that. Anything beyond that, because of what my constituents have called me about, is something that I will not be able to support.
This will allow us to get some better information to help move forward with what you're just saying about what to do with the soils in order to stabilize the floor.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike, roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Resolution number 21223 is approved four to zero. Resolution number 21225, authorize an agreement for use of city property for River Clay Fine Arts Festival. Lee?
Lee Taylor, the planning department, this is the annual River Clay Fine Arts Festival, and their approval to use the city hall grounds, including the grassy areas around the tower for that festival.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike, any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Resolution number 21225 is approved four to zero. Resolution number 21226, declare crash data group a sole source vendor for purchase of a crash data retrieval unit for the police department.
As the council president and councilman Charles Booth, the parks and agent for the city, you were provided a letter from the manufacturer of this equipment, that this crash data group is the only distributor in basically the US, Canada, and Jamaica.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike, any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Resolution number 21226 is approved four to zero. Next is resolution number 21227, award bid number 21022R for dumpster service to Waste Away Dumpster Service LLC.
Yes, sir, this is one of our standing bids that required a rebid. We got four responses, and Waste Away was the lowest out of those four.
Okay, we do have Ms. Kara Smith, if you want to, I think you had to comment on this agenda item.
Thank you. My name's Kara Smith, and I'm with Republic Services. The first bid that was done in July, Republic Services was the low bidder by $418.02. After that initial bid, a question came up from a competitor regarding additional services that we had listed at the bottom of the bid. Those are just additional services, like extra yards, extra pickups, that sometimes cities need, but don't necessarily put in the bid, so we wrote those in. They were not standing charges, it was nothing that would have been charged. There was also a total at the bottom, so the total still went in our favor for Republic Services. After that, the competitor called in and asked questions about that, and a rebid was done. Imagine, at that time, the bids had already been shown, and our pricing, which was substantially lower, was shown at that time, and our competitors knew about that. After the rebid was done, not only was it done, it was done using some changes that we offered to the city that would have saved the city an additional $300 on top of our bid. So where we had a two-yard being picked up three days a week, we offered a six-yard being picked up at one day a week with much less cost. So our bid for additional services and changes to save the city money was included in the new bid, but our pricing in our original bid was not allowed. So I just wanted you guys to take that into consideration, because we were only $27 above in the second bid, and we were over $400 cheaper in the first bid. So I feel like, as a service, we did a great job in the first bid, our bid was lower, and it was so minimal, and especially using our work that we did to get the city even lower rates. Thank you.
You can, you might want to hang out.
No, that's fine.
Any questions for Kara?
I guess my question would be to Carl, I mean, Charles, to, maybe he can respond to.
Yeah, if you don't mind, Charles.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, just curious, though.
Yeah, what they did was alter the bid, original bid form, and include some variable charges that couldn't be quantified. So instead of throwing out that particular bid, we threw out all bids and gave some clarification in the next bid that we would only pay what the monthly charges were, for each location and each pickup.
Okay, any other questions?
Do we, how, is that something that needs to be addressed, or are you satisfied with where we are now?
I'm satisfied.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, do we have a motion? By Mr. McMasters. Second by Mr. Pike, any other discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Resolution number 21227 is approved four to zero. Next, we have resolution number 21228, approve legal department contract services budget increase to cover costs of appraisals.
Yes, sir, this is, we have people interested in purchasing some city property, different locations, and part of our due diligence is getting the fair market value through appraisals, and we did not have that amount budgeted. The interest has increased, and we're asking for the increase to pay for those.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike, any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Resolution number 21228 is approved four to zero. Next is resolution number 21229, approval of MOU agreement between Decatur City Schools and Police Department for SRO program.
It's the same agreement you had before, but since we have a new term of office, the way the previous agreement or MOU read, that each governing new term has to approve it, but it's the same arrangement we've had with city schools for several years. Is that right, chief?
That's correct.
Sure, okay. All right, thank you.
All right.
Any questions?
Motion by Mr. McMasters. Second by Mr. Pike, any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Resolution number 21229 is approved four to zero. Next is resolution number 21230, approve architecture work for a new maintenance building at the cemetery.
Good morning, council president, council. Jason Lake, director of Parks and Recreation. This is a resolution asking for the money to do the architectural work on a proposed new maintenance slash office building at the Decatur City Cemetery. The building that we're currently using is the chapel in the middle of the cemetery. Baker Foundation is going to renovate that chapel and bring it back to where it is something we can be proud of, and something that'll look good and match the rest of the cemetery. But to do that, we got to, we have to get out of it, which means we have to do it, put another maintenance building out.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike, any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Resolution number 21230 is approved four to zero. Resolution number 21231, approve budget amendment for sanitary landfill. Wanda?
Yes, we're asking or requesting that we increase some line items in our enterprise fund. With the recent rains, we are trying to prepare for, you know, Fred's here, and Grace may be coming this way. But $50,000 in regards to the purchase of Crush Rock, we just, we'll discuss the equipment rental. We're asking for $120,000 in that line item. And also, in regards to sublet repair, in order to make the repairs to our 2012 Peterson Grinder, we're asking for $50,000, all funded by the enterprise fund.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike, any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Resolution number 21231 is approved four to zero. Resolution number 21232, approve additional right-of-way mowing with Lawn Scapes LLC.
Should I yield my time to Herman? This is the work that the mayor brought, that is doing the belt line and some other areas as far as a outsourced letter crew. We asked for your, we asked for acceptance of that resolution.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike, any discussion?
I think I've already made my position very clear on this issue, so I will not be supporting this stuff.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
No.
Pike.
Resolution number 21232 is approved three to one. Resolution number 21233, authorizes a lease agreement between Franklin Rock and Recycle LLC and the city of Decatur.
Yes, we're requesting, Wanda Tyler, landfill and recycling, we're requesting a lease agreement with Franklin Rock and Recycle for the lease of a 2017 Mobar wheel horizontal grinder. This is, we will use this grinder while our current grinder is being repaired. It's $40,000 a month, and it will cost us for inbound freight, $9,000 to get it here.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike, any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Resolution number 21233 is approved four to zero. All right, ordinance number 214471, establishing recycling processing fees at the landfill recycling facility.
Yes, we would like to establish a processing fee for our recycling partners. This will take effect October 1. Any loads that are under 500 pounds, there will be no charge. Any loads that are 500 pounds or more, there'll be $26 per ton charge. We are hoping that this will help us in regards to the operations at the recycling plant.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike, any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pike.
Coordinates number 214471 is approved four to zero. Next, we have board appointments. Board appointment, industrial development board, Terrence Welch.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike, any discussion?
About, a little over a decade and a half ago, we changed the policy, and Herman can probably tell you exactly when we did it, from the council approving all of the abatement, all of the abatements, and allowing the industrial development board to do those abatements. At that particular time, the intent was to sort of take the politics out of the abatement process, because the abatement, the abatements that come through our IDB are abatements that have to be looked at very intently, and they have to be, we have to look at them very closely, because if we give an abatement to someone who doesn't deserve an abatement, that impacts revenues that could be coming into our city's coffers, it could impact the amount of work that we could do on roads or a thousand different other projects. In this particular situation, this, the IDB is basically the oversight for our Morgan County Economic Development arm, and when I started looking at this person, because I don't know him, I saw where, when I pulled up on Facebook, and I couldn't help it, I could, I mean, could help, it just had, it was obvious. I'll say, sorry, I'm getting stuck in my words, that Jeremy Nels, the director of Morgan County Economic Development, and this person are very close, and that they travel together, they, you know, do a lot of family things together, and as an oversight committee that impacts our abatement process, I just don't know that that works for me. And so, that being the case, I think that this has to be looked at very objectively, because we're talking millions of dollars, anytime we do a 10-year abatement, we saw in yesterday's newspaper, it has the potential for millions of dollars' worth of abatements, and I, with this being the oversight board for that, I cannot support this appointment.
Hey, any other discussion? I would just say about this particular person, I do think they have a lot of experience and knowledge about industry, and have probably been involved in the abatement process in the past in their career, but I do, I mean, I understand what you're saying about abatements in general. I was surprised, I think Herman and I had the conversation early on when I came into this position, that I was surprised the council didn't have more oversight on abatements.
We did before, but the thing here is that the primary presenter of these abatements will be Mr. Nels, and there's an attorney that does some presentations as well, but the primary presenter will be Mr. Nels. And if, if my best friend is giving an, you know, it, it sort of tends to lean in his favor if he presents for an abatement, and then, you know, again, the oversight for that position that he holds is governed by this board. So regardless of what experience he has, you know, his relationship with this person, even though it's not a family member, in my mind, it would be inappropriate to put him in that, in that role. So, that's where we are.
All right, any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
No.
Pike.
Board appointment is approved three to one. Next, we have appoint Sheila Davis to the Decatur Morgan County Board Authority.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters. Second by Mr. Pike, any discussion? Roll call.
Ladner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.